Hi Anne, hi Maria.
Hello trustee Lewis.
Hi Bob Lou, hi Fred. Hi Tom.
How you doing Alan, hi Sandra, look I've looked.
Good evening everyone.
Hello Mayor, how are you today?
Good.
Mr. Mayor it is seven o'clock.
Good evening. This is Mayor Donald T Lopez, Village of Los Rancho's Albuquerque. Welcoming all of you to our Board of Trustees regular meeting. It is September the 8th, 2021, it is 7:01 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. This Village of Los Rancho's Albuquerque will be conducting this live meeting via Zoom. Video conferencing and streaming on its website. And Facebook page. Participants can also join telephonically. At this time, I'm going to read, I'm going to go ahead and do the roll call. Trustee Rael. Trustee Lewis.
Present.
Trustee Pacheco.
Here.
Trustee Ricabini.
Here.
I'm not sure if trustee Rael will be on the call, perhaps he left us momentarily. But we do have a quorum. At this time, I'm going to ask for approval of the agenda, I need a motion to approve the agenda or amend it.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Let's go back to the motion, who made the motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I need a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If be none, I'm going to call for the question. I'm going to call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rael. Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Three votes yes, the motion passes, the agenda has been approved. We now go to the public comment period. Item number four, participants may address the Board of Trustees to comment on issues, problems, or successes on topics that do not appear elsewhere on the agenda. Submitted written comments that were sent to the clerk prior to the meeting will now be read. Danielle, please read the submitted written comments on behalf of individuals.
Good evening Mayor and trustees. No written comments were received for tonight's meeting, thank you.
Thank you very much. Participants wishing to speak that registered with the clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting will be provided an opportunity to speak within the allotted three minute time limit. Danielle, apparently there weren't any, is that correct?
Mayor and trustees, I received no prior registrations to speak for tonight's meeting.
Okay. So therefore, at this time, I'm going to ask, is there anyone who wishes to speak that did not register prior to the meeting? If so, please use the raise your hand button.
Mayor trustees stand by.
Okay.
Mr. Eves, can you unmute?
How's that?
Yeah, Mr. Eves, this is Mayor Lopez, I do have a question for you. If you're speaking about item 12C on the agenda, you would, it would be proper for you to wait until 12C comes up.
Oh yes, I misunderstood, I thought that it was being reported that none of us had signed up for the whole meeting, so you're right, I'll hold my comments until the appropriate time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
This is Danielle, yes, I just wanted to clarify that public comments are items not appearing on the agenda. So if anyone has comments that does not appear anywhere else on the agenda, now is the time to speak.
Okay, let me start all over again, I'm going to ask, is there anyone else who wishes to speak that did not register prior to the meeting? If so, please use the raise your hand button.
Mayor trustees stand by.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith has been allowed into the meeting.
Okay. Good evening trust.
Ms. Smith, this is Mayor Lopez, are you speaking on another item, on the cannabis item, which is 12C on tonight's agenda?
No sir.
Okay, go ahead then, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Loretta Chavez Smith, 536 Chavez Road Northwest. Village of Los Rancho's 87107. Just a real quick question here, Mayor Lopez and trustees. When you came on into the meeting, you stated that this is a regular trustee meeting?
Yes it is.
Am I taking it then, that the meeting to be held on the 15th will not be held?
There is no meeting on the 15th. There never has been.
Okay.
Let me try to answer that question in a different way, so that you and everybody who's on this call understands. Our regular BOT meetings are on the second Wednesday of every month. The 8th of September is the second Wednesday of September, okay?
Okay, well just thank you for clarifying that for me, I'm, I do apologize. Thank you.
Okay, any further comment? Okay. If there's no further comment, I will move on and ask the question one more time. Is there anyone who wishes, anyone else who wishes to speak that did not register prior to the meeting? If so, please use the raise your hand button at this time.
Standby Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Um, I have a Camille who keeps raising your hand Camille, but I'm trying to bring you in. And it, you keep declining the invite to bring you in to speak. If your hand is raised, I'm going to try again, and if you could please accept the invite to speak. Camille, are you there?
I am, could you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record, and then go ahead with your public comment, you have three minutes.
Okay, Camille Avaros, 427 Alpariiso. Road Northwest Los Rancho's, New Mexico. Um, I I guess I initially was questioning whether or not this was a regular meeting for the trustee meeting, but you clarified that Mayor Lopez, so I will go on further. My question is are these Zoom meetings going to continue? For duration of how long?
I can't answer that question. It's not a question that's appropriate for me to answer at this time. You can give me a call offline and I'll discuss it with you, but tonight I can't say yes or no. And I don't know how long we'll be on Zoom as a Board of Trustees, okay?
Okay, and the reason I'm asking, or whether or not I have to make an appointment with you. Because there's some very critical items on the agendas. And I don't even get to see, because I'm on my phone, who's in attendance? Because there's very few people that make comments, so when there's as, you know, it's an item, I'm not going to talk about it, but I can use, make a reference to putting an AC zone on the map, that's very critical. So that's about our village residential people, so I would hope that people take these Zoom meetings seriously, but I have a hard time getting on Zoom, I'm on my phone, I can't get it on my desktop. So when we're voting on critical items. I would hope that maybe there could be an opportunity for a set amount of people to be face to face following the COVID guidelines for safety purposes. Because it's, there's so much going on in our village, that I think it's important to either hold back on some things where you could get more residential input. When it involves the you know, our village and the continuation of traditions and cultures of our village. And it's important to me, because I grew up here, you know, I'm 72 years here, and to me that's a lot, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you very much Camille, your comments are well noted and will be noted in the minutes of the meeting, thank you. Let me ask one more time. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak that did not register prior to the meeting, if so, please use the raise your hand button.
Mayor trustees, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you, we're going to move on to item five, which is presentations. Clerk Danielle Sadio Molina, have you heard from Representative Deanne Huckman V. Hee?
Mayor and trustees, she, they alerted me that she was going to be late, but I see her just popped on now, so we're going to go ahead and get her over to the panelist section. And we'll be good to go.
Okay, so Kiko, advise me when she's on.
She, she's on sir.
Good evening Deanne.
Good evening Mayor Lopez, how are you, how are you?
I couldn't, I couldn't be better, why don't you join us and make your presentation, we're very happy to have you tonight.
Yes sir, thank you so much, and I apologize for being a couple of minutes late. Work calls as all of you know, but for those of you who don't know me, I am Representative De Huckman V. Hill. I am the representative for District 15 in Albuquerque, which is our beautiful North Valley, including Los Rancho's. A few precincts in the Northeast Heights and one precinct on the West Side. I have been your state rep since 2018. When I got elected and I was reelected last year, so thank you very much for the continuing confidence in me. Tonight Mayor, I'm not going to take too much of your time, I just kind of want to give some updates on what's going on in the legislature right now, and what to expect as we head into the soon special redistricting session based upon the census that was just completed. And also the 2022 budgeting session, so it was just announced today, Mayor and trustees, that we are going to be having a special session of the legislature beginning December 6th. It is planned to last about two weeks, and what we're going to be doing there is we're going to be redrawing the state House districts and Senate districts for New Mexico, and also the three congressional districts that we have as well. So what, the way this process works is we take all of the census data that is compiled by the federal government. We run it through a system, we have specific tests that we have to meet, that we have to meet for these districts, it has a lot to do with proportionality and getting the same amount of population in each district and having communities of interest grouped together. You know, I'm sure all of you have heard the term gerrymandering before. We are very lucky in New Mexico and that we haven't seen a lot of that, and it's in its most malicious form. There has been some, but this year, we passed what was heralded as a bipartisan triumph. In that we created a nonpartisan redistricting committee in which we would be taking public participation that would allow the new district maps to be drawn with public participation and with nonpartisan members, so that we will be confident that whatever the new maps look like, they will represent New Mexicans well, without putting politics above New Mexicans' interests. So we're very eager to see how those maps are going to turn out, the, the committee is meeting now as we speak, they've had several different meetings, and I think that they're a combination of Zoom and in-person meetings, and so we will be getting those maps before the redistricting session begins. We will then have an opportunity to propose changes to those maps, I know that each party will have the opportunity to propose changes. Those maps will then go through the legislative process, and that they'll be assigned to two committees. They'll be vetted through the committees, and then they will go through the floor process, and once passed to the floor, they'll go up to the governor's desk, because the Senate is in charge of redrawing their district maps. And the House is in charge of redrawing their district map, so that's the process. We have seen mostly a decline in population in New Mexico, which is quite concerning over the last 10 years, however, Burnaleo County, including the Los Rancho's area has grown. And so what that means for me and the new proposed district is that we have choices we need to make. And that we have to figure out places to give away some precincts and some voters, so that we can take the size of District, House District 15 back to the the population, the sweet spot population stated by the redistricting committee and those rules that I cited before those federal redistricting rules. So that's what we're going to be doing in December, this will be my first redistricting, and so I have a lot to learn, but I'm confident that my peers will be there to support me and that we can keep House District 15 in an iteration that makes sense for us, and so that we can continue to represent the values of our community, so that's the news on redistricting in terms of the upcoming legislative session, I'm sure some of you have seen the op-eds that have been going on in the Journal about Albuquerque's continuing struggles with crime. The House Democrats have put out a multifaceted crime, multifaceted crime package proposal of which I did have some hand in drafting, and which we are planning to tackle the crime problem from many different aspects and angles, all the way from the criminal, reforming the criminal justice system and bail rules and who gets to be let out on bail or probation and who doesn't. We're also going to be looking at fully funding behavioral health programming, so that we can assist people that are dealing with substance abuse disorder or have mental health, mental behavioral health issues that are contributing to recidivism cycles and crime. So, you know, it's a very difficult problem to solve Mayor, there's many different reasons as to why we've seen an uptick in violent crime. I do want to also bring up the issue that many people don't know, which is we've actually seen quite a decrease in property crime and misdemeanor crimes, so it's not all bad news like you read about in the paper and see on the news. There's that old adage, if it bleeds, it leads, and it doesn't always benefit those who are reporting that news to talk about the good stuff too, so I want to let everybody know that we are seeing those metrics. And the last thing I want to report Mayor is we have a ton of money. We're going to be absolutely flush with cash. The last cycle, I was on the Judiciary Committee, but I do want everybody to know that as your representative, I've been appointed to the House Appropriations and Finance Committee. We are the folks that draft the budget for the state, I'm very honored and grateful to have been given that position. And so I look forward to working with you Mayor and the board members and other members of the community to see how we can make sure that some of that additional money gets brought back to our specific community. Because we have, we're flush with federal funding, and we're also going to be flush with additional state revenue this year as well, so it's always fun when you have money, I've always kind of tried to talk to you about the importance of the capital outlay process Mayor, and I'm sure I'll be in close contact with your office about that process again, but this is the year for big projects, and so let's think big. And let's really anticipate getting as much as we can out of the budgetary process, so with that, happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you very much Representative Deanne Huckman V. Hee, it's always a pleasure to see you and speak to you. I do have a question, but I'm going to ask, do any of the trustees have questions for Representative Huckman V. Hee? Any trustees have a question for her, please speak up at this time. Okay, then let me get to my question. The special session is about three months away, the regular session is about four and a half months away. Does it look possible that elected officials and representatives from the general public can go to Santa Fe and meet with their legislators and participate as they have in years past?
That is a fantastic question Mayor, thank you for that. So right now, the roundhouse, the Capitol is open to the public. We are observing social distancing rules, I know that committee rooms are closed. I do anticipate, so we learned a lot from the 2021 60 day session, which was Zoom session mostly, and the Capitol was closed off to everybody but legislators actually and staff. Slut staff, we learned a lot from that and that we could pull off virtual meetings and that the legislative process didn't have to pause in order to do that, but we also learned how absolutely crucial and vital public face-to-face participation is in that process, and so what I'm hoping to hear, and I'm pretty confident we will, is that there will be a hybrid plan announced. To get the best of both worlds, we'll have public participation. We may, you know, require social distancing, or we may limit the number of people that can be in rooms, I imagine masks will be required. But we will have, you know, limited face-to-face public participation, and then we'll also have a Zoom webinar option as well, so that people, folks from all over the state can give their thoughts on proposed legislation and take part in the process as well, so in a way, we're expanding the process and public participation in that, in that crucial process, and so that's the silver lining of all of this stuff. So yeah, that's what I, that's what I anticipate to happen.
So Representative Huckman V. Hee, I've been involved in a number of hybrid meetings. And they're not as difficult to do as some people might think. Actually, they're very, very well done, so I think it's entirely possible to be able to do that and have some face-to-face and some people doing the hybrid. So thank you very much for your presentation, and I look forward to visiting with you at a convenient time to talk about priorities for the Village of Los Rancho's.
Absolutely, thank you Mayor.
Thank you very much. Let's move to item B, lavender in the village, Katie Snap and David Hudson.
Standby Mr. Mayor.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yay, thank you. Good evening Mr. Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm glad to be with you tonight, you want me to go ahead and start?
Yes.
Okay, good evening Mr. Mayor and trustees, very pleased to be with you here tonight. I have some brief reporting as to how the 2021 Lavender Festival, which ended up being the Lavender Month rolled out this year. What I'd like to do is give you a quick rundown of what it entailed, what the pieces were. I'll tell you how it went, and then some input for next year, and then I'd love to hear from you all as to questions, you can of course ask questions along the way as well. As we know, lavender in the village promotes this beautiful culture that we have in the North Valley, where else do you find such rural beauty in the middle of a major metropolitan city, and so we're glad to be a part of it, it is run completely by volunteers. And we do have a event producer, you all know Dean, to help us out, if it weren't for him, I'm not sure we'd be able to continue doing it, that's for sure. So what it entails, we had five items this year, five elements of the fest. As you may know, as it got close to the middle of the summer, we were thinking, I don't think it's going to be a two-day festival like it has been in the past, last year of course it was not either. And we pivoted quickly to see what we could do that involved the eager public to jump in and be a part of it. Those five pieces were, number one, the survival kits, you all each got one I believe, I hope you did. Those we combined last year, and that was really all that we did for Lavender Festival last year, was a lavender survival kit. Number two, we decided to do boutique events, which were small number of people that could take that could take part in unique things like a chocolate tour at Eldora, tea at Los Poblano, sore tasting at Steel Bender's. Those went fabulous. The third piece was the market, which was on Sunday, the 25th. That was the closest to what looked like the festival in the past, that was at Hartnett Park. That was preceded the night before by the fourth item, which was, these are not in order, by the way, chronological. The night before, on the 24th, was a kickoff to pull in the sponsors and do a fundraiser for the night before the market. And then the fifth element was the U-Pick, which was a combination with some effort with you all to go into the actual fields on one of the weeks in July, Monday through Friday, from roughly six to seven or five to eight, depending on what night it was, and do a U-Pick for a certain price. So that's what it looks like. You can tell that it was logistically crazy because there was so much going on. And of course, shout out to Dean for doing so much of that footwork. How it went, positives, the location was fantastic. You know, we've done it in the past at the AgriNature Center. Parking at the AgriNature Center was always a problem, although the view is beautiful. Parking and getting there was always an issue since we narrowed it down to one day and we weren't sure about revenue income. We knew that the rent at Hartnett Park would be a little bit more palatable. So we thought we'd go ahead and go for it. Ends up, it was one of those blessings in disguise. And the location was great. It was fabulous being on the lawn. Having the barn there was good. Thank you to the village for the great weather. The parking was, there's more parking actually right there than there is at the AgriNature Center. And of course, we float over into the streets. That's one of the areas that was a big lesson learned, but certainly easy to shore up and do better next year was the parking, especially for, you know, keeping the major arteries down there open. Sponsors were great. We reignited the involvement of having sponsors. And that was a great plus. We just kind of took low-hanging fruit from that and pulled in the sponsors that we'd had in years past. But we'd like to really rank up on that next year. And then the U-Pick was fantastic. It occurred to us that this is probably the biggest symbol of our legacy of the partnership that we have with you all is those lavender fields. And for years and years, we went across the street to Los Poblanos, always thinking, wow, wouldn't it be great if we had our own field? Wow, wouldn't it be great if we helped the village plant some lavender fields? We finally did it and it was just beautiful evenings with people being able to go in and pick their own. Next year, we'd like to emphasize something more around that U-Pick. Maybe have an event in the lavender field with exclusive to the sponsors where they can come have a party and do their own U-Pick, something like that. Certainly do something more with the parking next year and fix that. Probably won't do the survival kits, although we haven't made that decision yet. The survival kits were high, high amount of labor for a very low net profit. I'm not sure we made any money off of them, but you know, people love them. And they loved them during COVID because they didn't have to come out to a festival. The day itself, on the 25th, at the market was fantastic. I hope all of you got out there. Hope you got out there on Saturday night, the night before. I would have said I'd love to have seen you, but I tested positive for COVID that day. It was really bad timing. My committee and Dean, though, completely picked up the pieces on that and ran with it. And they never even knew I wasn't there. And so that's really how it rolled out. I think next year will look a lot more like this year, perhaps, than the years in the past when we've had the big two-day festivals. So we have a closeout meeting in next week to kind of do some number crunching and figure out what was great. Love to hear input and questions from the trustees and you, Mr. Mayor.
I would just like to say congratulations. It was wonderful.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Thank you, Katie. So let me get to the trustees. Do any of the trustees have questions for Katie? Okay. Well, Katie, thank you very, very much.
I do have a question, Mayor.
Yes, go right ahead.
Well, not a question. I guess more of a comment. And I know Alan also did.
Go ahead.
Katie, I just wanted to commend you and the committee for doing an outstanding job with the Lavender Fest this year. I did attend both Friday night and Saturday's events and they were spectacular. Kudos to Dean for, you know, pulling it off in the way he did. It was, it was just really, really nice to attend. Saw nothing but smiles from people. And I think you guys are identifying kind of the things that didn't work. And hopefully, you know, those can be adjusted for an even better event next year. So just wanted to say thank you and tell you all you did a great job.
Trustee Lewis, did you want to say something?
Oh, I just wanted to reiterate what Sanders said. I think you guys did a great job. Congratulations to all of you. And we can't even begin to tell you how much we appreciate the effort that you put into it. So thank you.
Trustee Rick Abini, do you have anything to say about this?
Yes, thank you. And Katie, as usual, you all have been incredibly creative, flexible, and you've come through with an event once again. And thank you very much for all your team's work. I appreciate it.
All right. I understand that trustee Rayel may be joining us here in a little while. So when he gets in, I will let everybody know that he's in. Let's move on to Item 5C, Community Solar Opportunities. Andrew Stone.
Stand by, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Good evening, Mayor and trustees.
Give us your name and address and then go ahead with your presentation.
Bone, 2425 Teodoro Road Northwest in Los Grigos, just to the south of you guys. I have a, and I am on the board of the New Mexico Solar Energy Association. I'm a member on the board of the Renewable Energy Industry Association. And I am retired, so I can spend my time helping people understand some of the opportunities around solar now that we have finally passed a community solar bill in New Mexico. I was told I only had five minutes. So what I'm going to do is I had a PDF mailed to you that explains all the intricacies of financing, owning, you know, community solar, whatever. But I just want to present it to you in a tiny little document. So I'm going to share my, let me see if I can share my screen. If I can learn how to do this thing. Where's the, there it is. Okay. I think we are sharing and then I just play. So when I heard I only had five minutes, I made a very short presentation to introduce the larger presentation. So, uh-oh, I don't think the bullet points are showing up when I do my clicking. So we'll just, well, we'll just do it like it's like not a full view, but anyway. So I'm a solar advocate. I do this for fun. We all know we have a huge challenge, which is everybody on deck, climate change. And we know the village has been a climate action leader with the AgriNature and all we're doing with sustainable ag. And, but the village could produce its own energy now and it could move to an electrical vehicle fleet. And so what you need to know about community solar is it's a community coming together, building an array and sharing that array, the energy from that array. So for example, the village could be the sponsor of the, and it could provide many of our low-income residents in Los Franchos with reduced electrical bills. It would be able to pay for itself in about seven years and then produce energy free for the village for the 30-year lifetime of a solar system. And this is an opportunity that we have now because Representative Hockman-Vieill told us, we have money now. This is the time for our legacy projects, how we leave our mark on Albuquerque, how when we were faced with this challenge of climate change, how we kept our farms going and how we kept the water flowing and how we kept the energy going. So this is an opportunity. And an example would be that we would build a megawatt facility. It would take about six acres. This could be land that is not useful for ag, that is not irrigated, for example. The village could be the main off-taker of the energy. It would be about one and a half million dollars to finance, but within about seven or eight years, it would easily pay for itself. And this is an opportunity that has come through a lot of hard work for a lot of people. And I know all of the different installers. So we, you know, I'm happy to help in a pro bono situation to try and help the village come up with a plan. And I've been talking with, as well, the city over at the Rio Grande Community Farms because that would be a, but what I want to see is I want to see how all of us work together, you know, create what we need to do in this energy transition. I have had solar on my house since 2005. It paid off in seven years. In 2016, I bought the batteries to see if I could run my house 24/7 on, here, let me, anyway. The point I want to make is it's just an obvious thing where everything's come together. The low price of solar, the ability for municipalities to meet their own electrical needs by creating their own energy. And it just is an opportunity that I think I wanted to present to the village. And I'm available anytime, let me stop the share. I'm available anytime to come talk with you guys, to sort through the financing, how you use public, I mean, how you could use, get grants for a lot of this. So anyway, maybe there's an interest. And you're always welcome to come to my farm over here in Los Grigos. And I can show you all my collectors and my solar cars. And I'm getting a solar tractor this year. That's how much I believe in this. Thank you for your time, Mayor. I appreciate it. I'm at your service. Asuservicio.
Thank you, Andrew. Let me, I do have a comment and a question, but it's a simple one. But do any of the trustees have a question or questions for Mr. Stone at this time?
I do, Mayor.
Go ahead, trustee Pacheco.
Mr. Stone, I didn't quite grab what your connection is with, I mean, are you just a concerned citizen? Or do you represent a solar company?
So I do not, I work with all those guys. I basically worked in software my whole life while I was on the farm here. And I retired to put, to work the money I made at Apple into solar. And I spent four years figuring out how to do it. And let me tell you, it is not easy. You have, there has to be a way. So I am just a concerned citizen who has basically, you know, and I give my time to work. I go to the PRC meetings to learn about all the rules that affect how citizens connect their solar plants to the grid and how we can, and the rules we're making for community solar so that they can actually benefit New Mexicans like the legislators wanted. Instead, what we're seeing is sort of a New Mexico La Piñera. Out-of-state firms have come in to this market thinking that, you know, we don't understand how to take advantage of the sun ourselves. So this is something where I'm like, we are a bunch of smart people here and we know about the solar. We practically invented it here at Chaco Canyon and later at Sandia Labs, et cetera. And so we have a lot of know-how and, you know, so I just have put my retirement years into learning everything about utility solar and all the companies that are doing it. And, you know, and as somebody who's made money, I'm somebody who's willing to put my money on the line as well if that becomes an opportunity. I'm all about the community owning and, you know, putting together their own processes like this. And so I'm just, I'm an advocate, a crazy advocate. I hope that answers your question.
It does.
You know, if I can, okay.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to announce that trustee and Mayor Protem Pablo Rayel has joined our meeting. Is that correct, Pablo?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, very good. So let's move on. Do any of the other trustees have questions for Mr. Stone at this time? Okay, Mr. Stone, thank you very much. I saw your contact information and your telephone number. I will be calling you, okay?
Ay nos vemos, señor.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
We're now going to move on to Item 6, the Consent Agenda. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. 6A are the minutes of the August 18th, 2021 regular meeting. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move approval.
I need a second.
I second.
Is there any discussion from the governing body? Being none, I'm going to call for the question. Call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco?
Yes.
Trustee Rick Abini?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 7 is the next thing on the agenda, departmental reports. The departmental reports are included in the packet and reflect all the activities listed. If the governing body has questions for staff regarding the reports, we will have each trustee ask all their questions before we move to the next trustee. Let's start with trustee Rayel.
Thank you, Mayor. My questions are, Marivina Aldi.
Good evening, trustee.
Hi. I'm just on page 32. Where you say regarding, number 30, says that the contact is now on a time and material basis as it's impossible to estimate an ending date. Why is it that you can't estimate it?
Mayor, trustee Rayel, simply because it's taking so much time to get the cost estimates, get approvals for change orders through NMDOT. I mean, this last change order took almost a month. So we've decided with Brad Barry's consent to do time and materials rather than try to estimate extensions on the contract, which includes cost of overhead and insurance and other types of things, even in the periods of time when there's no work. This is a better financial arrangement for us, trustee.
Okay, well, thank you. That's what I need. I have one more question. Regarding the AgriNature Center on page 33, the kitchen improvements that you are going to do, is this provide, accommodate soil lab to be utilized in the Rio Grande Conservancy District? Are they contributing anything to it or are we doing it just because we'll benefit from it?
Mayor, trustee Rayel, at this point in time, it will be a temporary setup, although some of our cost estimates make that investment a little more than temporary. But it will be, it's to our benefit to have that located at our center because it adds to the services that we can be providing right here directly in the valley. There is no cost to us other than some minor improvements to the existing kitchen. And when I say minor and I say temporary, it is because the overall master plan actually calls for a replacement of that portion of the facility due to poor construction. And that's the temporary nature of this. But the improvements include things like an exhaust fan because the soil samples obviously have molecules, dirt molecules that'll be in the air, some extension of an existing cabinet and countertop. And some relocation of the appliances that are in the kitchen that are not necessary in the soils lab. But the space lends itself really well and we felt that it is a great service to be able to provide to our residents and the larger Rio Grande Valley area. And was a great fit.
Let me add to that answer, Maria and trustee Riel. Gabby Coughlin works for the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District as a agronomist. She's really a true soil scientist. There will be an article in the next Vision magazine that she has written. And so she's providing services to do teaching. At that soils lab. So actually there's, there is an in kind contribution. From the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District, okay?
Very good point, Mayor.
Any more questions, trustee Riel?
No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Lewis.
My first question is for administrator Simon. I am.
Hello.
I, I was curious in, in. When you talk about the co-op road projects.
Yes.
You talk about, we will likely do the following projects. That, if you could maybe go into a little bit more depth there.
Sure thing, Mayor trustee Lewis. What we did. With this latest co-op road application was to. Request funding for about five hundred dollars worth of road projects. What we got funded from the state was seventy thousand dollars worth of road projects. So we have identified, we have narrowed the list down to these items. Just crack sealing these, these two Rio Grande and fourth and striping Ortega and Rio Grande. This is just for this next round of co-op money. We also feel like we can shave down the, the. Funding amount on the crack seal. And we'll save about thirty thousand dollars there. So while we budgeted. About a hundred and forty five thousand. To match the original amount that we requested from the state. We have a little wiggle room, so we can add other projects. So if there are other projects that you are interested in seeing on the list. We're happy to entertain those. Those roadways. Keen, Maria, I, the mayor, we've been working very closely to identify the, the roads that most need. The attention right now. And we will be putting in yet another application for co-op money next year. So we will, we hope to continue this cycle.
Thank you, Anne.
Go ahead, trustee Lewis.
My next question is regarding the tenant issues. In your report, you, you say we are notifying the three main tenants of the shopping center. Is that the mobile home park? And where we at?
Okay, now Mayor trustee Lewis. The mobile home tenants are, we are working individually with each one of them and at this point we have. We have agreements with almost all of them. We, there are three that we are still working with. So that's moving forward. The three shopping center tenants that I referred to are the gun shop. The Q store. And the Excel dry cleaner. We have asked those tenants to vacate by. October thirty first. We may grant some extension to some of those facilities. But that is the general timeframe.
Okay, so that's what you meant by shopping center. Okay. Thank you, Anne. My next question is for Maria. Pablo got, ask you my first question. My second one is. Can you explain a little bit about how we? Applied for five hundred thousand and got a grant for. Seven hundred thousand?
Mayor trustee Lewis. I'd like to think it's because we have a reputation for getting projects done. And we had a very good application that follows along. Our funding that we received from the state road fund almost two years ago. Now, I think we've just proven that we have a good track record in taking those funds and using them as soon as we get them. We are, have already drawn down all of the. Twenty nineteen state road fund money that we received. And I think we were just a great candidate, have a really good project on Forest Street and they had. Additional funding to allocate. I think that it was. Important that we identified this project not only as an infrastructure project for roadway improvements. But that we identified and emphasized the economic impact of these kinds of investments. In commercial districts like Forest Street. I, I just believe it was, it was, it was a worthy project and the highway commission believed that as well.
Nice job.
Thank you.
My next question is for Fred. Fred's out there. I saw him earlier.
Fred, are you, are you on the call on the Zoom meeting? Not sure what could have happened. Why don't you ask the question?
I might fail to answer the question, Mayor.
Yeah. I heard it you Anne. I was just curious on the citizen.
I'm sorry, say again.
On the citizens issues. This, the tenant farm gates.
Yeah, I, I can answer that. I'm, I'm sorry, I was having trouble unmuting myself. That, again, that we're, they're still exploring the, the gate issues there. And they needed some information on, on the, on the crime data and stuff. And I provided that to them.
And I don't, I know nothing about their, their gate issue. So is that, you're talking about gating getting parts? Is that what?
Yes, they, trustee Lewis, Mayor and trustees. They've been exploring putting a gate or gates on, 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 on the entrance to. Their subdivision for years now and it keeps coming up every couple of years. And they had a, one of their board meetings earlier this summer. To talk about that and I believe they did not go with the gates. But we worked with them to make sure they understood what requirements the village, Bernal County Fire Department and the sheriff's department would have.
Okay, thank you, Fred. I have no more questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Lewis. Trustee Pacheco.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, trustee Lewis asked about four of my questions, so hopefully this will be short. Question for Director Justice. Hi Tiffany.
Hi.
So it, it really isn't so much within the information that you have in your report, but I'm going to ask the question again, just. Trying to find out where we are with the draft pilot project ordinance.
So Mayor trustee Pacheco trustees, there is no update to be given on that. This month has been a pretty busy month. The planning and zoning department just kind of processing permits. Especially with the influx of bed and breakfast permits from the new shorter rental ordinance. So there is no update to be given for that.
Okay, thank you. Next one is for Maria. Maria, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
How are you?
Good, thank you. And you?
Good. This is with regard to Village Center project. Just curious how Peladron's funding is coming along. Have you heard? Anything more?
Mayor trustee Pacheco, are you referring specifically to the subsidized financing for the housing portion?
Yes.
We have not yet had an update, although I believe that that application is pending. And it's my understanding and administrator Simon can confirm this, we believe that he will be giving a presentation. Of conceptual developmental aspects of Village Center at the October meeting. And I'm sure he'll have an update on that at that time.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Pacheco. Trustee Rick Abini.
Well, there's a, I have an advantage going last and everybody's asking a lot of questions. I appreciate it. I just want to say. Thank you to Ms. Simon Maria. You've done a great job with these projects as well. And Anne, thanks for keeping everything on track. And Mayor, thank you for the great weather.
Thank you. Any questions, trustee Rick Abini? Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to item eight, which is financial business discussion and approval of the cash report for August twenty twenty one. Treasurer Will Fisher is unable to make the meeting due to a scheduling conflict. Chief Financial Officer Tammy Silva, please present the cash report.
Good evening, Mayor trustees. I want to apologize in advance for my voice. Hoping I don't have a coughing fit. So please bear with me. Before I present the cash report, I just wanted to point out that there was a slight error in the cash report. It did not affect any numbers. It was the heading that starts on the third page. It shows that it's from July first through July thirty first. And that was just an error that I did not catch with the short turnaround time. I had a day to get this done with our meeting so quickly, so I apologize for that. But right now, the cash report before you is for the month ending August thirty first to twenty twenty one with the cash balance of. Seven million, eight hundred and forty one thousand, seven hundred and ninety two dollars and ninety nine cents. Which is an increase of ninety four thousand, six hundred and ninety three dollars and forty six cents for the month. And this is an excess of revenues over expenditures. Of six hundred and forty six thousand, three hundred and eighty three dollars and eighty three cents. And I have pointed out four significant or unusual items. The first is for IT services, a large check due to the Zoom meetings. And the after hours assistance we've had. For P and Z and BOT meetings and that was for my IT. We also paid our first quarter of the EMS and fire service agreement to Bernal Leo County Fire Department. In the amount of a hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars. We also paid Bernal Leo County Fire Department. The first half of the fire protection fund distribution from the state. This is a pass through. It comes directly from the state and we pass it through. Normally they send it in a quarterly statement and this year. The letter that we received, they sent the first half. So this is half of the total amount that we'll be sending over to the county. And then the last item are some checks that you'll see on the check register. For the settlements of the, some of the tenants. Whether they left with their trailers or they left the trailer us, you'll amount there.
Thank you, Tammy. Are you done with your presentation on the cash report?
Yes, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I need a motion to approve.
Good. I move approval, then I have some questions.
Of course, I need a second and then we'll get to discussion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion from the governing body? Let's start with trustee Riel.
Yes. The first question is regarding the account number three eighty or the purchased real property reserve fund. It appears on page thirty eight for four hundred and fifty nine thousand, two hundred and thirty eight dollars and twenty five cents. It also appears on, on the statement of revenues and expenditures on page sixty eight. For the same amount. But then on, on the summary. Statement of revenues and expenditures on page seventy three. It's zero. And I don't, I'm not following how that came, became a zero.
Tammy Silva, do you, do you understand that question?
Uh, yes, Mayor trustee Riel, I'm looking at that really quick. You said that was on page seventy three?
Yes, yes.
I will have to look into that. I am not sure how that became a zero either. I'm, but it is calculating somehow in the total, so that maybe just. That was obviously an error in the Excel spreadsheet, so I will look into that and make sure that's fixed for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. I have.
The, the balance is the four hundred and fifty nine thousand as well. That you see on the two prior pages.
Okay. Sorry about your, your cold or your throat. I have one more question. On page seventy four. There, there's a, a payment of three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty one cents. For electric security door boards. Could you get, tell us more about what that is?
Mayor trustee Riel, that is actually for a whole setup of an electronic door. Mayor, are you able to elaborate a little more on that? I know you had a hand in exactly what went in.
Yes, basically when we came out of COVID. Beginning in July, I did not want. The general public or anybody else to be able to just walk in. The, the front doors and basically. Be able to wander around Village Hall like used to happen in the past. So what we did is we set up the very front door to be able to open. But the door right behind it. That person has to be identified by our receptionist. Then she can let them in or anybody else can let them in. And so that was the cost to do that modification. It's pretty much a safety feature. You know, if anybody comes to the door with bad intentions, you don't want them to just be able to walk into the office. And wander around without people in the office knowing. As all of you know, we do have employees working from home. We do not have an entire staff here during the day as we used to in the past. So that's why I came up with that idea and that decision, okay?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tammy.
Any other questions, trustee Riel?
That's all I have.
Okay, trustee Lewis, do you have any questions for the cash report?
I do. I, I have a question on page fifty seven. Under the revenues. I, I was just curious what made up the contributions number?
As you Lewis, the majority of that is the Explorer Farm Camp. Revenues that they gave to us after the farm camps.
Okay, thank you, Tammy, and I have no further questions.
Trustee Pacheco, do you have any questions from the cash report?
I just had one question with regard to the register. I'm just curious, I, I see there were Bank of Albuquerque credit card charges. How does that compare with the Bank of Albuquerque charges?
Mayor trustee Pacheco, can you just let me know which page you're looking at? Are you looking at page seventy four?
Seventy four, I'm sorry, Tammy. Yeah.
So the, what you're seeing there is actually both of those charges. So. The credit card charge there, this is our last. Credit card statement from Bank of America. We closed that account. So that was actually items that we purchased on the credit card. Now, the three hundred and sixty two dollars above that, which is the analysis fee, that was our last fee. From the actual account. Now, are you wanting to know if that seventeen hundred dollars was fees that we were being charged from them?
Well, I guess what I'm looking at is I thought going to Bank of Albuquerque, we were going to see. Kind of reduced charges, credit card charges. And I'm looking at that being two thousand, nine hundred and eighty seven dollars and three cents. And obviously that seems higher than, than the Bank of Albuquerque. I'm just curious why. What, what the difference is and if we're just paying less at Bank of America because of closeout.
So that was Mayor trustee Pacheco, that was the closeout. So these, you should not see any more charges to Bank of America. As of this month, we have now had our account open with Bank of Albuquerque. For. Six months and in that six months, we have not had any fees from them because. The way their bank, our bank account works with them is the higher our balance. It, they do a calculation and it negates the fees and so due to that, we have not had any fees from Bank of Albuquerque. It, they do a calculation and it negates the fees. And so due to that, we have not had any fees from Bank of Albuquerque.
Thank you, Tammy. That's all I have more.
Thank you, trustee Ricabini. Any questions on the cash report?
Uh, no, no questions, but I do have a comment for Tammy. Thank you for the G R T information. And I wanted to make a comment to everybody that we now have our tier two year rolling, a twelve month average is, we are back at pre, pre COVID levels. And so
I agree.
Congratulations on that. You know, our village is, is showing resilience. And that, that was, I was really happy when I saw that. So just wanted to make that comment to everybody.
Thank you, trustee Ricabini. At this time, I'm gonna call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yeah.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Item B now, discussion and approval of resolution twenty twenty one dash oh nine dash oh one. Budget adjustment request parentheses B A R, budget line addition account forty eight zero eight oh. Chief Financial Officer Tammy Silva, please present.
Mayor trustees, before you is the resolution for the budget adjustment that was mentioned in the last meeting for an account that we needed to add to our expenditures. It was something that I inadvertently left off during the budgeting time. And this is the excuse me, the sixty eight thousand three hundred dollars that we received from N M D O T to do our crack sale project. And by state statute, we have to, any line item we're going to expend in, we must have in the budget. So this bar is adding in this expenditure into the budget.
Thank you. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero nine dash zero one.
I need a second. Any discussion from the governing body? Being none, I'm gonna call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Item C, discussion and approval of resolution number twenty twenty one dash oh nine dash oh two. Budget adjustment request parentheses B A R, American Rescue Act Fund. Chief Financial Officer Tammy Silva.
Mayor trustees, before you is the resolution twenty twenty one dash oh nine dash oh two for the budget adjustment request for the American Rescue Act. Again, by state statute, it is required that any expenditures that we will be expending during the year are entered into our budget. When we originally received the Rescue Act in July, we budgeted the revenue. However, we had not had our special meeting that happened on August twenty fifth to determine where we were going to spend some of those funds. This resolution before you has four areas where we would like to get approved to spend some of the funds. All four of these items were items approved in the August twenty fifth meeting. The first is for other capital projects, five thousand dollars for finishing the new website. The second item is ten thousand dollars for computer support. The third item, and that's IT support, especially since we are back at Zoom right now. That's what that is for. The third item is for the two payments of the EMS and fire protection services that we pay to the county to be paid out of the Rescue Act instead of the general fund. And the last item is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the maintenance grounds and roadways. And this is for the maintenance and all of the costs that are going to be associated with the trailer park removal of items and all of the maintenance that's gonna come along with getting that area ready for the Village Center project.
Thank you. I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty one dash zero nine dash zero two.
I need a second. Any discussion from the governing body?
I do.
Go ahead.
Part of it, they don't have to equal the full funds that we receive. This is just part of the funds that we are gonna spread.
Yes, Mayor trustee Lewis, that is correct. Right now, we have just budgeted for right now to spend these funds out of the, we, we received seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And so we, right now, are only approving these ones.
Thank you, Tammy.
Okay, any other questions or any other further discussion from the governing body? Being none, I'm gonna call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yeah.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you. Item D, discussion and approval of resolution number twenty twenty one dash oh nine dash oh three. Signature authority for the Village of Los Rancho to Albuquerque. Chief Financial Officer Tammy Silva.
Mayor trustees, before you is resolution twenty twenty one dash oh nine dash oh three. This resolution is something that came to Danielle's and my attention when we switched banks. When we were getting the credit card set up, they asked us for our resolution with who the signers were, were for the village. And we noticed that it had not been updated in several years and it still had old administration. And so wanting to take care of that, we just want to update this resolution to show who the actual signers are for any accounts, not just at Bank of Albuquerque, but for any, the C D that we have, the L G I P state account that we have. And so this is just an update to make sure we have the correct people listed as our signers.
Thank you. I need a motion.
Move to approve number twenty twenty one dash oh nine dash oh three, signature authority for the Village of Los Rancho to Albuquerque.
I need a second.
I second.
Any discussion from the governing body?
Mayor, I do have one question.
Yes.
Um, Tammy or, or Mayor, either one. How, how was this, was it the same three positions that have always been signers on the accounts?
I believe so, Tammy. Is that correct?
Mayor trustee Pacheco, as far as I can see, in the, what we've seen since two thousand fifteen. Yes, I'm not sure if anything was different prior to that. But the resolutions, we found that those were the three positions that have always been signers.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Okay, any further discussion from the governing body? Being none, I'm gonna call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you. Item nine is public hearings. There are none. Item ten, old business, there is none. Item eleven is announcements, there is none. New business, twelve A, discussion and approval to adopt ordinance number two eighty and ordinance amending agricultural commercial zone approval process to the zone map amendment process. Director Justice.
Mayor trustees, this is the exact same proposed ordinance that was before you last month for advertisement. Just again, a quick summary, it includes the A two zone as an option for the A C zone. Because right now it only is allowed for the A one and A three zones, but not A two in between. Even though the minimum lot size requirement is two acres, which is the A two zone. And with, and the bigger change is that the application and approval process that is specific to the A C zone itself will be removed and instead will be replaced by our typical zone map amendment process that is applicable for every other zone change in the Village of Los Rancho. So just to reiterate this what we're then, this would mean that anyone who wants to do a zone change for A C zoning would be required to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation of approval or denial and the Board of Trustees for your all's final decision. This also requires standard public notice and is different from what is currently in the A C zone. Where the process can be approved administratively by the director. And then if there's substantive comment, goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Before we get to discussion, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Tom.
And I move to approve and we'll go back up. Uh, move to approve ordinance, ordinance number two eighty. Amending agricultural commercial zone approval process to the zone map amendment process.
I need a second. Okay, at this time, is there any discussion from the governing body on this item?
I have a, a comment.
Sure.
I still am concerned that this can be done without any, the neighbors not knowing, and I believe members should know what's going on in their, in their neighborhoods. When you're changing zoning residential areas, A one, A two and A three. I believe they should have a right to know. And I also believe it's a responsibility of the trustees to approve this. So I don't I just don't believe we should adopt this amendment.
Director Justice, do you want to comment on that?
Yes, trustee Rayel, Mayor trustees, I'd just like to clarify that. So we strike through the existing process and we add two sentences. The application and approval process for changes to A C zoning shall follow section nine point two point two five E eight zone map amendments. That automatically puts it before the Planning and Zoning Commission for their recommendation. And then the Board Trustees for their final decision. The second sentence, public notice requirements shall follow section nine point two point two five F. That is standard public notice requirements done for every other public hearing that's, that goes before the commission or the board. So this guarantees essentially that the same public notice process will apply for this app, for this type of application as every other type of application that goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission or the Board of Trustees. So just to clarify, what that means is that for both the commission meeting and the Board of Trustees meeting. A sign will be required to be posted, notice in Albuquerque Journal and letter sent to everyone within three hundred feet of the property if it's less than two acres. Or four hundred feet of the property if it's more than two acres. And that is done for both meetings. So it, it will ensure that there is public notice that is done. And right now, the current process does have public notice in place as well. This just ensures that well, with the, with the public notice, it does go before the governing body for approval. With the current process in place. This A C zone change does not go before the trustees unless there is no appeal. That is equivalent to things like variances or conditional uses that are that go to the Planning and Zoning Commission due to adverse comment. And that is unlike every other zone change in the Village of Los Rancho. So we're trying to make this like every other zone change in the Village of Los Rancho.
So why is it that on, on page eighty seven, you strike out the, the three hundred feet in a fifteen day after the postmark date of the mailing and so forth, that paragraph A and number two and the next A, they're all struck out.
Right. Uh, trustee Rayel, Mayor trustees, that is because that is redundant to the requirements that are already included in section nine point two point two five F for public noticing.
Okay. Okay, I'm satisfied. I'm sorry. I just did not understand how this was, it looked like it was changing completely. And I felt we, we should get involved in it. Thank you.
I understand, trustee Rayel. You know, this just sites back to another more thorough section of the code. So it, it makes this look simple, but it references a much more detailed section.
Real good. Thank you.
Okay, any, any, any more discussion from the governing body on this? Okay, being none, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raise your hand button at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I have three hands raised. Standby.
Okay.
Ms. Camille, I have unmuted your, your microphone?
Yes, is there others that could go before me? I'd like to just hear what the others say and I will follow with my comments. If that's.
Do you have others in line, Kiko?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Standby.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Eves has been admitted.
Mr. Mayor. State your name and address. You have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Trustees, Mill Eaves, seven twenty one Chavitz Road Northwest. Um, I'll make this very quick. I want to repeat what I said at the last meeting. The three hundred foot requirement for public notice is absolutely inadequate. And I went through that in some detail at the last meeting. I'm not gonna do that again. But I would really ask that the trustees seriously consider expanding that three hundred feet so that the persons who are adversely affected or potentially adversely affected by its own change or, or decision will actually get notice. The way it is now, I am next door to Casa Londonia. And I had to go to their fence post to look at a notice that was on their fence post after a neighbor told me that this zone change was being asked for. And it shouldn't be that way. This is the, in today's world, it's too easy to give notice. And I'd ask you just to reconsider the three hundred feet. Thank you.
Okay, who's next in line, Kiko?
I have three more people online. I will be letting Linda McKee next.
Okay. State your name and address. You have three minutes, Linda McKee.
Standby, Mr. Mayor. Um, Ms. McKee, I am trying to let you into the meeting if you would accept the invitation. Excuse me, you are muted.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. I have a question for
State, state your name and address.
My name is Randy McKee. I live at seven forty nine Chavitz Road Northwest. I have a question for Tiffany Justice. In the old process, did it require a notification of the residents within three hundred feet and approval by the zoning commission before it went to the trustees? Is that the old process or was there an administrative process that just put this into place?
So, Mr. McKee. The current process that is in place requires a three hundred foot notice. And after a fifteen day public notice period, if there is not substantive comment, a zone, A C zone change application can be approved by the Planning and Zoning Director. If there is substantive comment, it is forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It does not go to the Board of Trustees with the current process that is in place.
So are there records available for us to look at for the approvals of past AC zoning?
Yes.
Okay, and we make an appointment through you or through?
So records requests are done uh, are handled by our village clerk, Danielle Cidio Malina. Um, we have a paper inspection of public records act request that you can fill out. Um, or you can also go on our website and fill out the form there.
Thank you, the reason I ask is is we noticed that uh, Casa Rondania does have AC zoning. And we were not familiar with them being approved through any of the processes where we had notification. And uh, we are within three hundred feet of that particular property. So I'd like to come down and take a look at those records when you uh, when I can get a chance, and it's just standard hours?
Uh, yes, so our hours are Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM, however, the records are not necessarily available. Um, if you come by with an appointment, you do need to submit an inspection of public records act request.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McKee, any further comment? Okay, Kiko, uh, who's next in line?
I have Loretta Smith, stand by, let me let her in.
Okay.
Ms. Smith, you are muted.
Okay, I'm sorry, my name is Loretta.
State your name and address, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Again, my name is Loretta Chavis Smith, five thirty six Chavis Road Northwest, Los Ranchos, eight seven one oh seven. Question, um, how many? AC zonings have been given out? How many properties have AC?
Um, Ms. Smith, there's one property that is owned AC.
Okay, now, I have a comment or a suggestion. I think we should put to bed. Any more AC zoning in the village. We have stuff coming up. That could cause this village a really bad situation. So, um, I'm just saying, I do not believe. It is the best interest for our village and the village people. To ever give out an AC zone again. Thank you, the rest of my time I would give to Mr. McKee.
Okay, uh, Mr. McKee, do you have any further? Are you on?
Uh, stand stand by, Mr. Mayor, um, stand by.
At this uh, mayor's trustees, at this point, I have a tendency to agree with uh, Mrs. Chavis Smith. One of the concerns that we have is, as this agricultural commercials zoning is approved in the middle of residential sections. It can bring in numerous issues that uh, we currently are not having to face. Uh, an example of this is the cannabis that you're going to be talking about here in a few minutes. This is a critical issue for us as we face the ability of the these uh, AC zoning. Um. Conversions from residential sections uh, to truly commercial zones where marijuana could be grown. It could be processed, and it can be sold in those locales, right in the middle of a residential section where we do not have any control or any say for over it. So I agree with Mrs. Chavis Smith that we should immediately put a stop to the use of these. And not allow this to go further in in the village because. There is great risk in in us losing the ability to hold our residential sections and keep our property values up. Which uh, again, is a contract that we entered into with you all when we bought the property. Uh, looking at the zoning, knowing that it would be stable, now we're expecting you all to help us maintain that. And a violation by approving these zones. Bust that trust wide open and and sets us up for some very bad situations in this neighborhood. And uh, we really do ask that you take a look at this seriously. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Kiko, is there anybody else in line?
There is one other hand raised, stand by.
Thank you.
Ms. Camille, you've been unmuted.
Okay, thank you, Camille.
State your name and address, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Camille Vados, four two seven Al Paraiso Road, uh, Los Ranchos. Um, just looking at. The adopting the ordinance. Two eighty, um, is almost like a done deal, you put it on the map or you change the. Uh, the process, that's going to allow people. That meet the criteria that are applying for an. Uh, a change of zone or to be in the area of an AC zone. Um, that. Affects the whole entire village, not just three hundred feet from the proposed. Establishment that wants to have, you know, either. Change their their uh. Their zone or be in the zone. Because if you look at where the proposed. Or the application uh, for Casa Rondania. Um, they are already packed. Where's the parking, it will affect, I'm on Al Paraiso, right off adjacent to Chavez. It will affect me, Guadalupe people residence, we have to stop to see. What the impacts are and how that. You know, AC will get us out of the agricultural realm and venue into commercial. And if we want to think of solar in. Uh, electric cars and looking at sustainable energy and climate change, then we have to look. At what these AC zones will represent. And looking at not just that. Everything else that's coming down the pipeline, short term rentals, bed and breakfast, these are all. Uh, possibilities, and if everyone wants to. You know, get on the back, the so-called uh wagon to go this route, then it's really going to affect. Our neighborhoods, our village. And what in the world do we really want, and the trustees and the commissioners have all the power. Where are we? You know, thirty three hundred feet, I will not be considered. And. Um. In in that application for approval. You know, it's, this is ludicrous, this is not what we represent. And I hope that when this goes before the trustees to vote for this ordinance, that you think of the residents who pay the taxes. Uh, for our village, thank you.
Thank you, Camille. Uh, at this time, when I ask the question, is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raise your hand button.
Mayor trustees, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote, trustee Rial.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to move to item twelve B, discussion and approval to adopt ordinance number two eighty one. An ordinance amending chapter nine, article five, section one of the Village of Los Ranchos codified ordinances. Regarding adoption of the building code, Director Tiffany Justice.
Mayor trustees, uh. As with the last ordinance, this is the uh, exact same uh, proposed ordinance it was uh, before you last month for uh, approval to advertise. Uh, this. Updates, well, so there's two things that this does, this updates our building codes, and this also makes us consistent with Burn Leo County's building codes. Uh, since we have a joint powers agreement with them, uh. Where they help us process our building permits, we want to make sure that we're both looking at the same set of standards for uh, contractors and um. The main thing is that we just, we do want to be uh, up to date and consistent with what Burn Leo County has and what amendments have been done. Uh, at the state level as well, may I stand for any questions?
Thank you, uh, I need a motion in a second before we get to discussion, I need a motion.
I'm moving.
Go ahead.
Uh, ordinance number two eighty one.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion from the governing body? Be none, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raise your hand button.
Mayor trustees, there are no hands raised.
Thank you, at this time, I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote, trustee Rial.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you, we now move to item twelve C, discussion and approval to adopt ordinance number two eighty two. And ordinance repealing ordinance number two seventy three, regulating the growth, sale, and production of recreational cannabis. And cannabis products pursuant to the Cannabis Regulation Act of twenty twenty one, Director Tiffany Justice.
Mayor trustees, this is the same ordinance so was before you last month for approval to advertise. Uh, with the um, exception of couple of changes, so just to highlight those. Uh, before I get into the rest of the ordinance, um. The proposed changes are on page ninety seven, um, and they are in the C one and B C uh, zones under the cannabis table. Um, the cultivation, uh, retail, sale, and consumption areas. Uh, were originally marked as being uh, C for conditional uses, um, and that has now been changed to P for permissive. Nothing else has changed within the, within those uh, sections, uh, there's still language within those that. Uh, still provides rules for each of those uses, so for example, retail, sale, and consumption areas are both prohibited. Between midnight and eight AM, consistent with our alcohol regulations and um, cultivation. Uh, has a requirement that structures be equipped with a activated carbon H tax filtration system, size so effectively abate odor emissions. Um. And then, uh, so those are the changes that have been made to the ordinance since uh, approval to advertise last month. So just going through this ordinance again, uh, to reiterate, first is the definitions. Um, the definitions have been updated to be consistent with Cannabis Regulation Act. Our uh, original ordinance that was adopted in March referenced uh, mainly the linen air and compassionate use act. Which is primarily for medical use cannabis, um, and so since there's a new act in place that uh. Looks at commercial recreational cannabis, um, that has been updated with that language. Um, and so, for example, like cannabis derived product that derived has been removed to be consistent with the definition that is included in the Cannabis Regulation Act. Um, in addition, uh, hemp is being removed. The main reason for uh. The inclusion of banning hemp uh, was because of its similar odor potentially to cannabis, so that's why it was included in the first place. Um, but if the language is passed the way that it is written right now, um, that allows cannabis, there's no reason to prohibit hemp specifically. Um, so the first section in the A one zone, um. This strike throughs, sorry, the language that is included on page ninety six, strike throughs, uh, the original prohibition of hemp of hemp and cannabis. In residential zones in Los Ranchos, um, and adds the condition that if an agricultural activity requires that requires state license. Um, needs proof of water availability, we receive a copy of that, uh, the reason for that being that there is concern about uh, the water consumption of cannabis. Um, and that is one of the requirements that the state uh, has for its license. Uh, in order to issue its license, they do require proof of water availability, and then they also monitor. Um. Or at least ask for records of monitoring your water consumption. Uh, the second section, uh, well, so C one and B C are pretty much the same. The uh, only real difference between the two is we originally for agriculture, um, had a caveat that um. Agriculture is limited to an area not to exceed ten percent of the area of the permissive use it supports and not to include livestock, so we're just making sure that that language is still consistent. Um, so in both the. C one and B C zones, um, there is a note that facility should not be included within three hundred feet of an existing school or daycare. This is something that Cannabis Regulation Act uh, affords communities to uh, adopt, they. Uh, also say that you can't go more than three hundred feet, so that's why uh, it's set at three hundred. Um, I already kind of went over the. Conditions, um, that I guess I would say for cultivation, retail, sale, and consumption. Um, the last two uses in those tables is product manufacturing and establishments that serve one or more functions. Both of those are conditional uses, um, the reason for that being that manufacturing is a bit more of an intensive use in general, no matter what it is that you're uh, manufacturing. So we did make this conditional, and the establishment serving one or more functions. Is um. Included primarily because uh. If you can include manufacturing, you know, we want to make sure that if you're doing manufacturer plus sale, you know, you you have a conditional use. Um, so. And then the AC zone uh, consistent with the A one zone, that changes the same, so. Um, that is the proposed ordinance as um. As is included in your packet, um, however, upon conversation and feedback from residents, I can propose an amendment now of this ordinance that would establish regulations. In the C one zone and the B C zone, um, exactly as is written, um, included in your packet, and. At the same time, uh, prohibit cannabis in residential zones. Uh, so the reason for this, um, is that there is some uh, speculation and debate about. The use or, well, the agricultural use and how agricultural uses, uh. I guess intermix with our residential zoning, our zoning, the majority of the village is uh, agricultural residential. Uh, and allows agriculture, agricultural uses and residential uses, so there's no purely agricultural zone, there's always a combination of these two, and. A majority of the village, you know. I I don't want to throw a number out there, but you know, like maybe eighty percent or ninety percent, a a large number of uh. The village's properties, like properties in the village are zoned dual agricultural residential, and um. There's not really any that is purely residential, even our commercial mixed use zones, you know, allow agriculture, um, but at the same time, most of our. Residential agricultural zones are primarily residential, less so agricultural. Um, there's also a few concerns about other things that the Cannabis Regulation Act uh, requires for cannabis activities. Um, for example, they require twenty four seven uh, security and video surveillance. And that can create possible privacy issues, uh, the regulations also require that access areas be lit twenty four hours a day. Um, which would be not compliant with our dark sky ordinance, um, whether that's actually, you know, residential and commercial. Um, and the Cannabis Regulation Act also requires um, some signage that might not be allowed in residential areas. Um, and so. If uh, the trustees are interested in uh, adopting a ordinance that would allow regulations. Uh, for cannabis and commercial and mixed use zones, um, but prohibit cannabis in residential areas. Um, I would propose the following amendment that would be made verbally, um, and the board could adopt this verbal amendment. Um, so just to make sure that I'm reading it out loud correctly, um. On page. Ninety six, so so the definitions would stay the same, because again, we're still being consistent with Cannabis Regulation Act. But on page ninety six, under uh, section two, be permissive uses, um. For, under subsection two. Instead of striking through that entire part of that sentence, the strike through would only be on the words derived. And including hemp. So the sentence now reads. Display and sale of agricultural products, including animals raised on the premises and products incidental to the sales activity. But not including the sale or distribution of cannabis or cannabis products. So that would, again. Consistent with what has been adopted back in March, prohibit cannabis in residential zones. The reason for the two differences in the strike through of the derived and including hemp is that. We, just to be consistent with our new definition, we removing derived from our definition of cannabis derived product. That's just to be consistent. And then also. Hemp is not really regulated in the Cannabis Regulation Act and is a bit of an innocent crop in all of this. And so unless the board feels the need to also include hemp, my proposal would be to strike through the prohibition on hemp. Which is also an option for the trustees. And then also for subsection four, the blue sentence would remain the same. But the strike through sentence would again remove the words derived and including hemp. And the words personal production of would instead become homegrown. And this is consistent with Cannabis Regulation Act that just talks about homegrown cannabis. Folks are allowed six plants per person, twelve plants per household. We would not regulate personal production, just as we don't regulate personal production right now with our current ordinance. The language there is just included for consistency with Cannabis Regulation Act. So with that, the sentence would then read, the cultivation, intentional growth, manufacture and distribution of cannabis and cannabis products. Except for homegrown cannabis are prohibited. And then to allow for cannabis. I guess businesses and activities in commercial and mixed use zones. The proposed regulations for the C one and B C zones are the same. The main reason for that is. That the concerns that staff have heard have primarily been about residential zones and not so much about commercial and mixed use. And our current language does allow sale of cannabis in commercial zones. So we would just be expanding that use a little bit more to allow for consumption areas. Cultivation in commercial zones and manufacturing, again with the regulations that are included in the C one and B C zones. So then the last change that would, just to be consistent with. What I mentioned in the A one zone is on page ninety-eight. And this applies to the A C agricultural commercial zone, under a permissive uses subsection two. There is a strike through for the last, for the end of that sentence, to be consistent with that similar language that's in the A one zone. The words derived and including hemp would be striked through. So that the sentence now reads, commercial activities associated directly and exclusively with horticulture. Equestrian activities and general agricultural activities, including but not limited to the raising and selling of vegetables, fruits, crops and livestock. As well as the care, feeding, training and boarding of livestock, but not to include the cultivation, intentional growth, manufacture or distribution of cannabis or cannabis products. So. Just, so now having read all of that into the record, just to summarize, there are a couple options before the trustees tonight. If the trustees choose to adopt this ordinance, it can be adopted as is written and included in the packet. Again, the only difference between the last month's ordinance and this one is that. Now in the commercial zones, retail, sale, sort of consumption areas and cultivation would now be permit or permissive instead of conditional. And then the other option before the trustees, if you choose to adopt an ordinance tonight, is to have. That same language for the commercial and mixed use zones. But also prohibit cultivation and cannabis and cannabis derived products, all real cannabis activities in residential zones. And so. With that, I will stand for any questions and then I'll also ask if Attorney Winter has anything to add that I've missed or miss spoken about.
I'd like to ask Attorney Nan Winter to pipe in at this time. Nan, are you on?
I am, Mayor.
Are we legal in doing it this way?
Mayor, both, both proposals by Tiffany appear to comply with the act.
Okay.
She, I think, you know, I view it as a continuum. Where you are today is at one end of the continuum, which is a ban of any cannabis activity whatsoever. The proposed published ordinance is more or less at the other end of the spectrum. It is almost, you know, a complete acquiescence to cannabis in all, all, all. All zones with some conditions attached in certain zones. Tiffany's proposed amendment this evening is essentially a point on the continuum somewhere in the middle. It would essentially ban cannabis activity except for home growing in the residential zones. And I think Tiffany articulated six or seven reasons why you want to protect those residential zones. So she's also got some conditions that would attach in the more commercial type zones. And again, I'm not seeing anything running afoul of the act at this point.
Thank you, Attorney Winter, at this time.
Actually, Mayor Trustees, I apologize, I have one more amendment to amendments. So. Just for the establishment serving one or more functions pursuant to their state license types under the Cannabis Regulation Act. It's, it should read, because of the inclusion with manufacturing specifically, that establishment serving one or more functions. Pursuant to their state license types. That includes manufacturing, like comma, including manufacturing under the Cannabis Regulation Act, like one or more functions. One of which is manufacturing pursuant to their state license types under the Cannabis Regulation Act. The, the reason why that conditional use is there is only for if you have a license type. That involves manufacturer plus something else. If it's just cultivation, retail, sale or consumption area, any combination of those, those are all permissive uses, therefore they don't necessarily need to be conditional. So I just, I wanted to make that additional, additional amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney Justice and, I'm sorry, Director Justice and Attorney Nan Winter. Before we get to discussion from the governing body, I need a motion in a second. I need a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to defer this item to a later date. I think there's. Just a lot of information out there. I know I, I don't feel comfortable in that I know. Everything that's coming out of the state right now and kind of how it's going to fall with, you know, with the village. So I'd like to make a motion to defer this item to a later date.
Okay, before I add my comment, I need a second.
I would make a second to defer this item. I like Director Justice, what you've done. I like where we're headed. I think it's a critical issue that we keep it out of the residential zones. But I would like to see it cleaned up a little bit and brought back next month. Before we advertise it, I just want to make sure we have this thing, that we have it right. And that we have it solid based on what we know at this time. So I would second it based on that.
Okay, my comment on all of that is, I would like to see us take action sometime. Within thirty days and preferably possibly two weeks from tonight. What is the thoughts of the governing body about having a special meeting on Wednesday, September twenty-second? To hear this and have only cannabis on the agenda and have some other folks give us some information that we may not have seen or do not even know.
Mayor, I guess my only concern is. Will we have all the information by then? I feel like, you know, there's still lots of pieces falling. And just want to make sure that we are, you know, we're voting on something that's going to be best for the village residents.
Okay, with that being said, Director Justice, how long can we actually take? What risk are we running into with not making decisions within, say, within, say, thirty days? Please expound on that.
So Mayor Trustees, so I guess. Well, to clarify, the special meeting could just be informational to present the options before the trustees to. Learn more information and if, you know, staff can receive feedback at that time for a possible amendment to this ordinance. For the October agenda, that would allow for, I guess, action within thirty days. The reason for, I guess, action at this point is that the way that our regulations are currently written. There's, well, the, the main, the main concern that I have is that the Cannabis Regulation Act allows. The village to adopt a three hundred foot buffer between schools and daycares. If someone were to get a license with the state. And want to locate within that three hundred foot boundary. We don't necessarily have anything on the books that says, no, you can't go there. Right now, we do allow. In our commercial zones, we do allow retail sale. We exclude manufacturing and exclude cultivation, but we, our current ordinance has written allows consumption areas and retail sale. So. If someone were to get a license with the state, which, actually, I, I take that back now. The only licenses that are being issued right now are cultivation licenses, therefore that wouldn't happen, I guess. So the main thing is just that the state is moving to issue licenses. And we do want to be on the forefront of if we are going to have regulations, have them in place before anyone tries to get a license.
Mayor, and I can add to that too.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think there is a window of opportunity here for you to, to receive more information. This is a hundred and seventy-seven page act. There's at least fifty pages of regulations that have dropped in the last two weeks. So yeah, things are changing, things are moving. But what you, what you run the risk of is, and why you should act within the next thirty days is that you don't want to grandfather anybody in right now. The act clearly prohibits you from relocating somebody once they've gotten a space. So, you know, there is time is of the essence, but I think you have the time.
So let me offer this comment. What is the pleasure of the trustees? Would you like to have an informational meeting? Or do you want to just act on it at the next Board of Trustees meeting, which quite frankly is about thirty-five days away?
I think I prefer an informational meeting, just so that we can really sink our teeth into. You know, all the details before we act on it.
Okay, Trustee Lewis, what's your opinion? You seconded the motion.
Tiffany, I want to make sure I'm clear. We have a ban. Ordinance two seventy-three, I believe it is. Has a ban on. Anything in the residential areas. That they can get licensed to, to sell or distribute on, in the commercial zones, is that correct?
Uh, Trustee Lewis, Mayor Trustees, that is correct. The, so just to clarify, what exactly is ordinance two seventy-three? That is the red strike through language that is included in your packet as well as. Actually, even like the words in black as well, that's currently existing as well as the red strike through language. So that is correct.
So I, I guess my, my feeling is. Again, I, I like where we're headed with this. I think the most critical thing for us is keeping it out of the residential zones. And, and I would be for an informational meeting and have this. Ready to advertise for sure at the October meeting.
So let me offer a couple of dates for the trustees. The informational meeting could be on the twenty-second or on the twenty-ninth. What's your preference?
Mayor, the, just a couple of questions first and also comment on the meetings. On the informational meeting, I will be overseas on the twenty-second and the twenty-ninth both. So I will not be able to attend, but I can certainly catch up and listen to the tape. The, what I'm, what I'm hearing right now is, is the way that this is re, is written. Is that there would be no retail sales and no production allowed in any residential area. Right? No, no producing of any commercial, commercially sold cannabis.
Trustee Rickabini, are you referring to the way that it is included in the packet right now?
Yes.
The way that is included in the packet right now, that is not correct. This language strikes through a prohibition of cannabis or cannabis products. And allows for display and sale of agricultural products, including cannabis. And allows for agricultural activities, including cannabis. So what, what is prohibited is manufacturing, but that is something that is generally prohibited in the A one zone. Just the way that it is currently written in, in the packet right now, not including the verbal amendment that I was talking about.
So commercial growing in residential areas is allowed in both in the, in the, in the proposed ordinance?
So Trustee Rickabini, Mayor Trustees. The commercial aspect of it is something that. Myself and Attorney Winter and folks are wrestling with a little bit. The main thing is there's no real difference between the cultivation of a crop on a property. And the harvesting of it and sale elsewhere. That makes it necessarily more of a commercial activity than other agricultural activities that we allow generally. So like, for example, alfalfa is allowed to be grown on a property, baled and then sold either on that property to take elsewhere. Or sold off the property and cannabis. Itself is not, I think, any more commercial than that activity.
Well, Mayor, if I might, Trustee Rickabini. With the exception that state regulations require that cannabis growing facilities or any, any cannabis facility has to be. Strictly monitored with security devices, cameras, lights, fencing, it can't be viewable from the streets. So in that way, it is not like zucchini. Just my two cents on that.
Thank you.
Right, and, and Mayor Trustees, also in addition to that, we have other regulations that are in place that could limit. This kind of activity, separate from the use. We have a dark skies ordinance that prohibits. Or limits lighting and lighting after eleven PM. We have fence height limitations. Of six feet and, you know. Any exception to that would require a variance as with anything else.
Then I'm, I'm good with, I'm certainly good with the thirty days, Mayor, and recommend that we. That we reach a decision in our October meeting.
Okay, is there any further, go ahead.
Yeah, I would. I would be for, agree, I agree with the Trustee Lewis and Pacheco, we should have an informational in two weeks and then. We could decide what we want on the, in the thirty days or in October meeting, so I would be okay with an informational meeting in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so before we get to the point of calling for the question, it's time to ask for public comment. But before I do that, is there any further discussion from the governing body? Okay, apparently not. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raise your hand button.
Mr. Mayor, I have two hands raised, three hands raised, four hands raised. Stand by.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Randy McKee. I live at seven forty-nine Chavas Road Northwest.
Go ahead.
I would like to commend you all on taking the time to look at this. I would like to commend you all on taking the time to look at this more clearly. Taking the time to understand the impact that it's going to have on the village. Thank you for doing that, and I encourage you. To continue to listen to the village residents. And one of the things I'm still not clear about, and I think a number of other people are not, is. We are going, you are looking at Tiffany. Prohibiting the use of the A.C. zoning for growing and production of marijuana cannabis.
Uh, so, Mr. McKee, mayor trustees, so to be consistent with the A-one zone, since language is pretty much. The allowable uses are very similar to the A-one zone. Similarly, we would, anything that we would allow or not allow in the A-one zone would be allowed or not allowed in the A.C. zone.
And that would be clarified in the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, succeed any of my time to Mel. I know Mel Eves has some, a few comments to make, so my remaining time, go to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next in line, Kiko?
I am letting in Mr. Eves.
Thank you.
Mr. Eves, you are.
Yes.
State your name and address. You have three minutes.
Uh, Mel Eves, seven twenty-one Chavas Road Northwest. Uh, I, I would also like to thank the board for deferring this matter. As, as you know, I've been working very hard on this issue and prepared a memo which I shared with Tiffany and, and Nan and trustees and the mayor. And I think, you know, we're headed in the right direction. I frankly did not see these amendments until the meeting. And, and I certainly don't, have not had time to make any substantive comment on them. But I, I do want to express my appreciation for deferring this. I can speak a little bit to the timing. I, I listened to one of the workshops the municipal league did. And Linda Trujillo, who's the superintendent up at the Department of Licensing. Said that it would be ninety days from the September one date on which applications can first be filed. They, they were under obligation to, to decide those applications within ninety days from the filing date. So I think you will have time to do what you're talking about. And, and, and I would ask that we, sort of draft. Of, of whatever's going to be submitted, be made public as soon as possible, so we can all have a chance to participate. In, in, in analyzing the language. Thank you.
Uh, who's next in line, Kiko?
Maybe I say one more thing, Mr. Mayor.
Of course you can, go ahead.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm not sure I understand, understood Tiffany. I'd like to ask, did I understand you correctly? That, that cannabis growing for commission or for commercial purposes. Will still be permitted in the residential zones?
Uh, so, Mr. Eves, mayor trustees, with deferral of this, that is not the case. Our current language that's in place prohibits. Cultivation and cannabis activities in residential zones as it is right now. Without adoption of a new ordinance, currently, we prohibit cannabis. Activities in residential areas.
I'm aware of that, but with the, the changes you've, you have shown us this evening. Uh, if those changes had been adopted, would cultivation of cannabis in commercial zones have been permitted?
In commercial zones?
I'm sorry, in residential, I misspoke.
Uh, so the way that it is presented in the packet, yes. With the amendments that I mentioned verbally, no.
Oh, okay, I, I do want to comment. There, there will be great resistance. To commercial cultivation of cannabis in the residential zones. You can count on that. And I, I, it sounds like maybe you're backing off from that. I don't think any of us are interested in a compromise. As far as commercial activity in the residential zone. That to us is, is getting into sacred territory. And I would really encourage you to take heed of, of the reaction, the public reaction. We do not want an expansion of commercialization into the residential zones in this village. You can already see the problems that have been caused by what Costa Rendena is doing. And that is a very small, isolated area is of commercial zoning. I can't even imagine what would happen if we were widen any kind of commercial cannabis activities. Into all of the residential zones, A-one, A-two, A-three. So I would urge you not to go that route, or you're going to meet a lot of opposition.
Thank you. Kiko, who's next in line?
I will be letting in Camille, stand by.
Sure.
Did you hear me? I'm sorry.
Uh, state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Okay, Camille Vados, four-two-seven Alparayso Road Northwest Los ranchos. Thank you. Uh, trustee Pacheco for initiating the deferment for this. Proposed ordinance for, on the cannabis. Item, anyway. Just looking at what we're faced right now with a lot of commercialization throughout our village. In this ordinance for cannabis is no different. The only thing is, is, you know, if you've. If you've been to the Everest establishment and I know that's not in Los ranchos, it's county. But nonetheless, it's in a residential or mixed-use area in the county. And the poor neighbors were just stuck with what that establishment represent. With the lighting, with the security, with the smell, because cannabis on a multi-level. You know, it doesn't, it's not just confined to one small area. The other thing I just want to say is. In your planning meeting to, or. Before you, this ordinance goes for adoption at the next trustee meeting. I would just hope that you would look at the maps where the residential areas are. Because my neighborhood, there's one empty lot to the east of me, and that's V.C. zoned, and that's residential. So I think it's important to look at the maps to get familiar with where the neighborhoods really are. Because basically, there's a lot of areas where the possibility of commercial zoning. Where establishments as such as this could take place and still impact neighborhoods. But thank you for your time and.
Thank you. Kiko, is there anyone else left in line?
I have two other hands raised. I'm letting in Loretta Smith.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, you are muted.
Yes, again, my name is Loretta Chavis Smith, five thirty-six Chavas Road, eight seven one oh seven. Um, again, thank you. Commissioners for wanting to defer this. I have a real problem with the fact that. Well, let me restate this. Ms. Tiffany. With the changes that you were proposing, let me get this understood and be straight. Not allowing commercial growth of cannabis in residential areas. Is that correct? Is that one of the stuff that you had gone through and striked out and rewrote?
Uh, Ms. Smith, mayor trustees, that is correct. The work, the version that's in the packet. Does remove the prohibition of cannabis in residential areas.
Okay, um. And again, I just, this is now is just a comment. Please take a really good, hard look at this. Ordinance. And thank you for deferring it.
Thank you. Kiko, who else's hand is up?
I will be letting in Kim Rayle, stand by.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, Kim. Please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Kim Sanchez-Riel, eighty-seven twelve Rio Grande Boulevard in Los ranchos. Mayor Lopez, trustees, great to see you. I know, haven't seen many of you in a long time because of COVID, but can't wait to see you again. I will keep it brief, since it sounds like I'm kind of the last commenter between you guys and your bedtime tea, so. I actually live in the village and I'm commenting tonight because I joined the cannabis industry about four years ago. And I often call myself the, the reluctant cannabis entrepreneur and, and was dragged into the industry, kind of kicking and screaming. And at the time, I really had some of the historical misunderstandings, misconceptions. And frankly, kind of brainwashing about the evils of cannabis. And safety issues with the plant. And I had to go through a whole, I grew up in the Nancy Reagan, just say no era. Was not a cannabis user, didn't touch it, and was asked to, to join a chef in New York City as the CEO of a company. And what our company does is we commercialize, develop and commercialize best-in-class formulations for ingestible cat cannabis, so edibles and beverages. And we serve the global cannabis industry. So although I sit here in New Mexico, my customers are, are all over the world now. And so I came to speak to the trustees tonight because. I've visited many cannabis operations throughout the United States since I joined this industry. And I think there's a lot of misconceptions about the dangers and the, so the scariness of, of, of some of what we grew up with in the cannabis industry. So I wanted to just offer myself to any of you individually, or, you know, for the informational session, to talk to you about. How cannabis can be safely grown and processed. And in a way that protects the public interest. I don't really have a, you know, a horse in this race in terms of wanting to grow cannabis in the village. That's not my business model. I really provide not-infused ingredients to cannabis producers all over. But I do want us to have smart, thoughtful regulation in the village that is compliant with state law, that supports responsible growers and manufacturers. And ultimately supports the public and public safety. So. I can share many anecdotes with you about how I can have seen this done very well, very professionally. It is a very professional industry. It's also the most regulated industry that I've ever been a part of. And I think you're doing the right thing to be very thoughtful about this policy change. And I just want to offer my, my. My input as someone in the industry and would like to support a really good outcome for, for, for the village of Los ranchos.
Thank you very much, Kim. Kiko, is there anybody else's hand up?
Mr. Mayor, that, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, before we call for the question and call for the roll call vote, trustee Pacheco, would you like to restate your motion?
I'm not sure how to restate it. I guess I, I would just make a motion to defer the item to a later date after we've had more discussion. Between us.
Thank you. Trustee Lewis, do you second that?
I, I, I would definitely would like to see it on our agenda next month. And I, I don't know, Sandra, you, you talk about a later date. It's possible to amend that to say. To revisit it on next month's agenda?
Sure. So let me back up and I will make a motion to defer this item to the next Board of Trustee meeting in October twenty twenty-one.
And you are okay seconding that, trustee Lewis?
I would second that.
Okay, I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote, trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco?
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini?
Yes.
Okay, now we move to item D. Discussion and approval to advertise ordinance number two-eight-three.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Are we, are we still planning on this informational thing in two weeks?
Uh, you know, that's not, that wasn't a part of the motion, but that can be discussed outside of this meeting, trustee Rayel.
Okay, we can discuss it in the informal discussion, probably.
Absolutely. Remember, the mayor can call for a special meeting, or the trustees can call for a special meeting, as long as you have three days' notice, okay?
Right, thank you.
You bet. Okay, let's move to item D. Discussion and approval to advertise ordinance number two-eight-three and ordinance authorizing the issuance of the Village of Los ranchos to Albuquerque. New Mexico General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series twenty twenty-one. Administrator Simon and Attorney Winter.
Thank you, mayor trustees. This item is a follow-up to the item that you approved last month. Allowing the village to apply to the Mexico Finance Authority to refund the G O bond. Our application was submitted and approved, and it is now time to advertise a change in the ordinance. So before you is the actual ordinance language. And I believe Eric Harrigan is online to answer any questions, as is Attorney Winter. And I.
Go ahead, Eric, are you on?
Mayor. Attorney Nan Winters. I don't see, I don't see him on, but Attorney Nan Winters is on.
Go ahead, Attorney Winter.
Mayor trustees, I don't, I don't think I've seen Eric on all night, but I, I don't think it's, this is just permission to advertise. You will actually approve this document in the October meeting. As Ann mentioned, the application was approved by N M F A. You all have this unique two, two-note process on your ordinances. So this begins the refunding process. This is the ordinance that was drafted by Bond Council. I did run through it, made some minor corrections. It looks ready for publication. And this, again, would be adopted in October and authorize your refunding.
Thank you, Attorney Winter. At this point, I need a motion and a second before we have discussion. I need a motion.
I mean, approval of ordinance number two-eighty-three.
I need a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion from the governing body? Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raise your hand button. State your name and address. You have three minutes. Kiko?
Mayor, there is a hand raised, stand by.
Okay.
Mayor Trustees?
State your name and address. You have three minutes.
Joe Craig, 505 Caide Elpadi to Northwest. We had, I I contributed the last time this came up for discussion. I have a further question. It looks like to refund this bond that I helped lead the drive to for the village to pass as its first property tax. It's going to cost us $200,000. I don't see anything in your packet that indicates the savings in the refinance of the of the $1.8 million. Could you please elaborate on the?
Administrator Simon or Nan Winter, can you answer that question?
Mayor Trustees, I don't have the the figures in front of me, but I, it's my understanding that the 200,000 that Mr. Craig is referring to is the savings to the Village of Los Ranchos.
It's not costing us, right? Does that answer your question, Mr. Craig?
I mean, according to your packet, you're refunding it $1.8 million for like, it's a refund for $2 million. So in other words, we're paying Bond Council, I would assume, $200,000 to refund this, but I don't see this the savings in the interest rates.
So Attorney Nan Winter, do you think you can answer that question? Remember, this is only an advertisement.
Yeah, Mayor Trustees, Mr. Craig, Eric Harrigan presented this to you all a couple of months back. And it demonstrates his his analysis, this is a refinancing essentially. You're taking out your old debt, reducing the cost of the debt and reissuing or refunding a new level of debt. As I recall, and I don't have it in front of me, and I just looked through my email, I can't find Eric's presentation. But Eric's presentation demonstrated over $200,000 or about $200,000 in savings. So I'm not sure where in this document Mr. Craig might be referring to, but you clearly would not be doing this, but for the fact that you're reducing debt costs and saving ultimately the taxpayers $200,000.
Thank you, Attorney Winter. Please continue, Mr. Craig.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I don't, I I'll go through your packet. It it it's showing the principal amount is 1.805. And let me find the and it's not to exceed $2 million. I'll find the, so I I I mean, that's fine. I I certainly understand refunding this, and I'm sure the interest rate is lower, but if we're paying $200,000 to a bond council, I don't see any benefit to the village. That's my point. That's page 105 in the aggregate amount not to see $2 million.
May I comment on that? We did receive a detailed presentation from Eric Harrigan. And our attorney Nan Winter has represented us throughout this process. I I don't believe that your observation is correct, Mr. Craig. But you can continue with your comment, but I think you're almost done with your three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. That's that's my comment. It it doesn't appear in the way that you have this presented that there's any cost savings to the village. Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna ask the question again. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raise your hand button.
Mr. Mayor, can I just comment real quick?
Go right ahead. Go right ahead. You're on mute.
I'm sorry. If Joe Craig would go back and look at the June packet, the presentation is in the June packet.
Okay.
So that that's where he can find the presentation that was given to us.
Thank you. Okay, any hands raised, Kiko?
Mayor Trustees, there are no hands raised.
Okay, I'm gonna call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Mayor, I moved approval earlier to approve number 283, ordinance number 283, and I should have said approval to advertise ordinance number 283.
Thank you. Is the second still valid?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini. Thank you. Now we go to item E. In accordance with the Village of Los Ranchos 2013 Codified Ordinances, Chapter 9, Section 9.2.2 Planning and Zoning Commission. Parenthesis A, Membership. The commission shall consist of seven members who shall be appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the members of the governing body. The mayor is recommending Shaleen Smith to be appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Her information is in the packet. Director Justice.
Mayor Trustees, as the mayor just kind of mentioned, she is a resident of the Village of Los Ranchos, interested in being on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And in order to be on the commission, you need to be appointed by the mayor and trustees. And I also stand for any questions.
Okay, before we get to discussion from the governing body, I need a motion and a second. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve to approve Shaleen Smith as the new planning and zoning commissioner.
I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion now from the governing body? Be none. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raise your hand button. State your name and address. You have three minutes.
Mayor Trustees, there are no hands raised.
I'm gonna call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Mayor, I just, I wanted to have a comment.
Sure.
I I just wanted to know who vetted her and and what impressed you and why you think she'd be a good planning and zoning commissioner?
Let me try to comment on that, and then I'll let Director Justice and Ann Simon. Director Justice and Ann Simon Administrator did interview Shaleen. Shaleen participated in our AgriFutures convening beginning basically a year ago. And so she advised me that she had moved from Sheridan, Wyoming to basically to live in the Village of Los Ranchos. She thinks this area is is a perfect area for her to live. And she now owns a home here in Los Ranchos. She served on the Planning and Zoning Commission and was the chair of that commission in Sheridan, Wyoming. And she was also a city councillor in Sheridan, so she has extensive municipal experience. And I think that's what impressed me perhaps more than anything else. Director Justice or Ann Simon, would you like to comment any further on this?
Mayor Trustees, Trustee Lewis, I too was impressed by Ms. Smith. Not only did she roll up her sleeves as a new resident to participate with us in the during the AgriFutures process, she sat on the AgriFutures Economic Development Table, which was my table. So she had all kinds of wonderful ideas about agritourism and understanding sort of the economic development and business side of the potential of Los Ranchos. She has a lot of agricultural experience and identifies with an agricultural community, and I thought she was a good fit for the PNC.
Director Justice, would you want to add to that?
Certainly, Mayor Trustees. Mayor and Administrator Simon covered pretty much all of it. I just would like to reiterate that I did appreciate the fact that she has had prior experience being on a planning and zoning commission in another community. Because it does provide a pretty good basis for what we do with our planning and zoning commission.
Thank you. So Trustee Lewis, are you ready to vote?
Yes, thank you very much, all of you.
Is that a yes? Thank you. Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Okay, we now come to item 13, trustee informal discussion. Roundtable discussion is informal. The Board of Trustees will take no official, go ahead.
You never let me vote.
I'm sorry. I thought I asked to begin with, but go ahead.
Yes, I will, yes.
Thank you very much. Thanks for intervening. You did a good job. Okay, item 13 is trustee informal discussion. Roundtable discussion is informal. The Board of Trustees will take no official vote or other official action. Trustee Rayel.
I'd just like to to ask that we should consider having the meeting in two weeks to get it as much information as we can on this cannabis issue. And if we get enough input from the public, then maybe we should have it. But if we don't get any, then you could just not have one. You could call it at your discretion.
Thank you. Anything else, Trustee Rayel?
No, that's all I have.
Trustee Lewis.
I don't have anything tonight, except that I would say I won't be available on the two dates that you suggested.
Thank you. Trustee Pacheco.
I do have just a couple of things or three things I should say, but I will be available the 22nd, but not the 29th, Mayor, just so you have that noted. I just wanted to bring up three things real quickly. I had a resident talk to me a little bit about the lights on Fourth Street again. And I know this has come up a few times, but I just wanted to make it public record on the public record that not complaining that they need to be completely turned off or turned off early in the evening, but if there's a way that we could dim the lights or turn them off later in the evening. So I just wanted to make mention of that. There also seems to be overgrowth of some trees on Rio Grande headed south right before Chavez. And I can see where it blocks the stop sign. I've seen numerous people just run right through that stop sign, and I just don't know if that that those trees there are blocking, you know, the the sign itself. And then lastly, I'd like to make a recommendation or at least bring up for discussion for the village to maybe consider selling the Schulte House or looking for some monies outside to to either get it, you know, up to par so that we could use it or move it. I just thought it would be something that we should look at. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Pacheco. Trustee Ricabini.
I have no comment, Mayor, at this time. Thank you.
You're welcome. 14 is adjournment. The time is 9:38 PM. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. It's a great meeting.
Hi, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.